Anybody else want to speak on anything not on the agenda? You don't have to have a printed card. Come on down.
Good evening. Joyce New from 90277, but the Torrance side. And I wanted to just share with you some information on the Southern California Association of Governments estimates from an article that was written actually in 2014 in City Watch on the overdevelopment and the estimations of increase in population of the Los Angeles area. And basically, the article says that SCAG has been producing fanciful figures on their estimates for increasing population growth in this area for years. They projected in 1993, they projected that the city of LA would have a population of 4.3 million by 2010. Their estimates for the region were off by 1.4 million people. And they say that these inflated estimates that they're producing do serve as the basis for pushing through densification strategies favored by planners and developers allies. They go on to say basically that these policies often threaten the character of classic neighborhoods. In this case, they were referring to a Hollywood, but I think it applies to our neighborhoods as well. It says that this is a plan to reshape West Coast as the East Coast and as a version of New York, replacing low-rise environment with something that Mayor V. Rorosa called elegant density. I'm not sure that for many of us, there is such a thing as elegant density. And one of the comments was, this is all an attempt to worsen the quality of life, to leave us without backyards and with monumental traffic. And as many of you know, you've seen my face before, and I'm very concerned about the mixed-use developments, one that has already been approved at the corner of Prospect and PCH, and the other one which we'll be looking at on Thursday with the Planning Commission, the Legato project at Palos Verdes Boulevard and Pacific Coast Highway. Another thing that this says, which I think is important, is we cannot, it says LA cannot expect an influx of young professionals, which is what some of these developers are counting on. It says, "The infusion of urban young talent is not going to come," that we are ranked 31st as a place for people aged 20 to 34, behind such hotspots, hotspots, as Milwaukee, Oklahoma City, and Philadelphia. It does even worse, 47th among metro areas with people ages 35 to 49. So therefore, there is no, as they put it, "No crying need for more ultra-dense luxury housing." And I would urge you to take a look at this, to consider this, as we move into an entire corridor along Pacific Coast Highway that could become a high-density neighborhood for whom? We already have empty storefronts. I don't want to see more empty storefronts. We were talking about human trafficking, massage parlors, and crime. Empty storefronts are not what we want in this area. So I would urge you to really consider, we want development, but we want it to be smart development, not development that's going to remain empty. Thank you.
I wasn't sure I was going to speak tonight if this was relevant, but so many people have talked about the beautification and keeping our city nice and less dense. And I thought, well, I prepared this, so I'm going to talk about it. And it's a specific comment about the Legato project, but also about the planning of new projects. In the city of Redondo Beach, the 2004 to 2014 park and recreation element, it says that the goal for Redondo Beach for the parkland to citizen ratio is three acres per 1,000 citizens. Redondo had this ratio in 1990, but since then, the ratio has degraded, so it is now only 2.35 acres per 1,000 citizens. The park element also mentions the Quimby Act that set this ratio. And I'm quoting, it says, from the report, "The Quimby Act provides a formula for determining the amount of land dedication or impact fee based on the number of new residents in the development, the cost of the parkland in the community, and the jurisdiction's parkland acreage standard." I'm also quoting, it says, "The current impact fee for Redondo Beach is $400 per unit. Was adopted in 1972 and has never been modified." Now, this report was written in 2004. "This fee is extremely low in comparison to impact fees levied by other cities in the South Bay." See page 3-173 of your report. "The Quimby Act provides a formula for determining the fee, but apparently, Redondo does not use it." The report recommends that, "In order to provide the city with an adequate funding mechanism for parkland and recreational facilities development, the Quimby Act should be implemented to the fullest extent possible. In comparison to the current park and recreation facilities fee, the Quimby Act calculation would substantially increase the impact fees collected by the city." End quote. Again, page 3-173. I would like to know the following: exactly what Quimby fees have the Legato developers paid to provide for parkland, and how much would they have paid if Redondo had implemented the Quimby Act to the fullest extent possible? I have my own simple-minded calculation in order to not further degrade the ratio. According to the letter in the easy-reader, the Legato developers have proposed 146 units on a four-and-a-half-acre site. If you assume over two people a unit, that is almost 300 people, I'm going to round it to 333. At 1,000 people per three acres, 333 people should be one acre. I want to know, where is this extra part acre going to come from? I think if you're going to have a plan, you had a plan, you should please incorporate it in planning in the future. Bingo, I'm done.
You got it. Thank you.
All right.
Bill?
Holly, you speak of something near and dear to my heart, and I really appreciate the work you've done. But Erin, let me ask you, what is our current Quimby fee?
Current fee is $7,500 per unit.
Right. So that was updated in 2005, I believe, if I'm not mistaken. And so it's not $400 anymore, but that's not to, you know, denigrate what you said, because I think it's great that somebody's drilling down on that and seeing that our parkland ratio is actually going down. And according to the state of California, we are a critically underserved community as it pertains to parks, and that includes the acreage at the beaches. So thanks for bringing that up. But so you know, our Quimby fees are $7,500 for every increasing unit in the city.
Okay. I'm going to move on to the adoption of the strategic plan.
Yes, Mayor Council, this is a follow-up to your strategic planning session that happened on October 14th. That was the session where you reviewed the goals for the current three-year period. There's six months remaining in the current three-year planning period. We've listed the goals in the report of high importance, is that the council did identify and include in the strategic plan another goal that was not previously there, and that was to review and identify a process for updating the city's general plan. So that has been added to your strategic plan. You identified objectives left to the staff, the work of bringing forward dates and which departments were involved, and trying to do some sequencing so that this fit within our ability to deliver the projects on schedule and when we can get the work done. So that's what these pages provide. It identifies the departments involved. It identifies timelines for completing the work. You'll see that in certain instances, we projected out into beyond the next six-month time period. So you'll see in certain instances, future objectives. And really, that's not to say that they're not important, it's just to say that, given everything that we have going on over the course of the next six months with the processing of the waterfront EIR, with the work of the subcommittee, and the discussions with AES that you just spoke about, and our budget process, that this is a sequencing that, from a staff standpoint, we can deliver and follow up on. So really, what we've done is bring forward those objectives as part of the strategic plan, and the recommendation is to adopt it. We're happy to answer questions about it, and also to set March 29th, 2016, as the next strategic planning workshop.
Sure. Bill?
Thanks, Mayor Aspel. Yeah, this is great. Joe thinks putting this all together is a great meeting. And I, you know, I read through it, I don't have any problem with anything except the very last page, where we talk about the general plan update. And there were a lot of residents there that sat through the whole meeting. I'd say a lot, I don't know, probably six of them sat through the whole meeting. And we've gotten a lot of feedback from the residents that they want to see a general plan update, and sooner rather than later. And yeah, I mean, this basically pushes it out to June. I mean, we're just going to, in February, talk about a workshop overview on the general plan's current status and content. And then, in March, we're going to present to the council a budget process and timeline. Well, we've already been through that budget process and timeline. It was, you know, it's already prepared. And then, in the budget, in June, we're going to appropriate the money to conduct a community assessment engagement process. So, you know, I'm sure, they're not here, but I'm sure if they were, they'd be very disappointed that, you know, we aren't going to be appointing a group, you know, maybe till next summer. And yeah, so somehow, I want to move this up. I don't know exactly how, but maybe move the, present the city council a budget process. I mean, we really only already have that. I mean, you know, the workshop overview on the current status and content, I mean, it just, somehow, something needs to get moved up here, otherwise, I know, a lot of those people are going to be very disappointed. And I feel the same way. I mean, it just doesn't-
Bill, basically, the general plan that people were concerned about, it wouldn't affect the projects they were here to worry about, would it?
Well, the general plan is 23 years old.
No, I'm not disputing that part, but I'm going to ask the city attorney or the city manager, if we updated the general plan and totally changed it magically tomorrow, would it affect things that are already in the planning stages now or have been submitted?
Each project would, it would depend on each project. There are, I think this is different from, say, the issue that came up with the zoning regarding mixed use with the moratorium. That's a different sort of issue, and it's a matter of priority for all of you what to do. Some of the projects that come up, under state law, the law is already set as to what will apply to them, because it's as of the date that the project is deemed complete. And I don't want to get into projects you may be hearing. So I'll give a general answer. And I don't know if, well, it's for all of you to prioritize. What isn't in here, and just throwing this out, because this may or may not satisfy the objective Councilmember Brand has, but what's not in here is sort of accelerated date, not for the overall general plan, but for zoning regarding mixed use. And that might be a more attainable with the staff you have. But again, I don't know if the objective is, hey, we need to fix mixed-use zoning as quick as possible, or is it more, the general plan is 23 years old, and we need to get that fixed? So I don't know what the-
Well, it's both, actually.
Right. And that's why I don't want to decide that, but I think those are two different issues.
Well, let me just focus on mixed use in that area, because there's a lot of properties there that are under the mixed-use zoning, that if we start this process, let's just say we're going to address mixed use citywide or in that specific area, we can do that, you know, fairly quickly. And I guess what I would do is itemize that as part of this, to come back to the council on February 2nd. Instead of talking about workshop overviews, make February 2nd the date, maybe redirect staff to come back with how we could amend our mixed-use zoning in certain areas.
Yeah, and I think the challenge that we have is that this falls exactly in the same timeframe that we're going to be dealing with the comment period for the waterfront EIR responding to hundreds, if not potentially thousands, of comments on that 6,500-page document. So the public comment period ends just before the February 2nd city council meeting. So while our goal is not to disappoint anyone, our goal also is to really get the work done that is already in process, progress, before we take on something in addition. So in consulting with the planning director, community development director, this was really kind of the best that we could do, and even this will be a struggle, quite honestly.
Well, what about, Joe, instead of them working on general plan workshop overview and current status and content, they work on potential modifications to our mixed-use zoning, and just replace these action items about forming a whole-
Bill's making a motion to change the day.
What I'm hearing Councilmember Brand is saying is, you can let the general plan, because that's more comprehensive, you could let that slide a little bit, because the real urgency is on the mixed-use zoning.
Maybe that was the misunderstanding.
No, there were two, there were different topics. So they came up in different contexts, and that, one came up in the context of the strategic plan, the other came up in the context of the discussion that we had regarding the moratorium. And what I hear the city manager saying is, they couldn't do the general plan, because it's so more comprehensive quicker than this. What I haven't heard yet, but what may be a possibility, is let the general plan slide a little bit, but move up the mixed-use zoning, because that's a more-
I mean, I have a question for Erin. How hard would it be, Erin, to come back with potential amendments, maybe a choice of how we could amend-
Bill, I suggest you just make a motion to amend this strategic plan, and if it gets a second, then we-
Well, he will, but he wants to make certain, the planning's going to be able to get it done.
I mean, could you come back with amendments to our mixed-use zoning in February, instead of this workshop overview and general plan status and content report?
It's possible that we could substitute. If council has direction to initiate mixed-use amendments, which I think has been a discussion, one of the first steps is for the Planning Commission to consider those amendments.
Right. It's a long process.
So keep in mind, that's a month in and of itself. It'd be tough, but possible, to bring it back in February.
Yeah, instead of that. So that, you know, I don't see any, well, I see one more light on, so it's just- That'd be my motion, is to accept the strategic plan as-is, but amend under the last page G, instead of, well, replace general plan 101 workshop overview and general plan to return with potential amendments to mixed-use zoning, February, I mean, give it another week, February-
That's your motion?
February 16th. That's my motion. Make it February 16th, not the 2nd. That's my motion.
Christian, you're up.
So I just want to bring some perspective to the conversation, because I was in the breakout group at strategic planning on this, and so, and we'll just, just to explain to everybody out there, this strategic planning session was at the end of a three-year strategic planning period. So our next session is kind of where we reset, and we start over, and we come up with big vision and ideas for going forward. What we wanted to try to do in this last session was squeeze in something that kind of gets us as like a half-step to where we're going to start really discussing this come, when is strategic planning again, end of March or beginning of April?
End of March.
Okay. So what we did was, we set some, in the subgroup that myself, Erin, and Cheryl Park were in, we set some achievable goals. And this kind of goes into discussing mixed use in a sense, but the whole idea of these workshops is that we, as a council, and the residents, don't necessarily know everything that is in that general plan. And I think that was illustrated by someone who spoke earlier tonight about what's in our general plan under parks and open spaces. Okay? There's stuff in there that we're not even aware of, that we might not be complying with, and so we need to kind of revisit it. And the idea was that, hey, in the next six months, let's put this, let's put together some informative sessions for both us and for residents, so that we actually, by the time we get into the next strategic planning session, we can actually really have some meat to start moving forward on. If we consider the living incremental update, then that's kind of what we're doing. We're saying, hey, let's attack mixed-zone uses first. Let's, you know, we can attack aspects of the general plan as we see in a need of priority. So the only, the only issue I have actually with this was, is number three, is the consider in context of the 2016-17 budget process, which does kind of push out appropriating money to do the workshops until later in June, and I would rather see that be a part of our mid-year. So that way, we can at least make sure that if we don't have a first workshop, by the time strategic planning happens, we have at least appropriated the money, and we're on the path. We've got the ball rolling, and we're not waiting till June to do that part. I'm okay if, February 2nd, you think is the first time we can actually start talking about it, I'm willing to trust your judgment on how loaded staff is, but I do want to make sure we're not waiting till June to appropriate funds to have the workshops and start the discussion. I want to start having those, if possible, before we get into strategic plan next year. That's all.
Okay. Anybody in the public want to discuss this at all? Come on down.
Hi, I'm Marina Shelby. You all know me by now. I was at the October 14th meeting. I was one of the six people who stayed. So I am here tonight because I'm interested, and I wanted, I wanted to hear the outcome of this, and I very much appreciate your remarks, Bill, about trying to move this forward. And there are issues that we need to address immediately, having to do with building and with overdevelopment and with mixed-use zoning. And I mean, there's a lot of things that we can and should be addressing as soon as possible, and not waiting until June. And I think you would have a lot more support of the community if we can take steps to move this forward as quickly as possible, rather than extending it. And I mean, I just also wanted to say, there's a lot of us who've been very vocal about these issues in planning commission meetings, and in city council meetings, and various meetings outside of this, and we're here to help you, we're here to support you. We all love this community, and we want to see it. We want to keep the character of our lovely beach community for the next 70 years, and not have overdevelopment that's going to, you know, ruin things, that we're going to be stuck with. And so, anything that you can do at this point to really get the ball rolling would be very much appreciated. Thank you.
Come on down.
Good evening, council, mayor, staff. Thank you very much for your time tonight on this subject. It's very important to us. This is very, very important. You only see a few select, a few of us talking about this tonight, because we kind of had that understanding last time, and through all the many meetings that we've had, that this would be moving forward. So we're really looking at you guys to do what you can to move this forward, because it is becoming urgent. Proper prior planning comes before urgency. After that becomes a crisis, and we went through that a couple weeks ago. We're here to work with you guys, whatever you guys need, staff, council, mayor, whatever you need. You guys have our numbers, you guys have our emails. If you don't, we have a website. You know, let us know. Like Marina said, we're dealing with some issues that have potentially, could damage our community for the next 50 to 70 years, or more, or greater. And we really want to preserve the character of our community. We see it's very urgent, we really want to get involved, get our hands dirty, so to speak. And we really want to make sure that you guys get that knowledge and understand how important it is that our input is very important, and we're looking forward, not June, but sooner. Councilman Horvath, thank you very much for saying, hey, let's get that money now, let's plan that now, and whatever we can do right now to move this ball forward, government moves slowly, we all know that, but proper prior planning, thinking ahead. Thank you very much. Nils Narenheim, Avenue 8.
Okay. Bill?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Aspel. So there's already been two projects that my understanding is the community does not support, that have taken advantage of this mixed-use zoning. And there's more properties there that are zoned for that, that are on the docket, that could easily be exposed, and are exposed, to this mixed-use zoning. So the developers aren't going to wait for this council to reset our priorities. We have a certain, we have a certain urgency that we should be looking at mixed use in that area, or maybe in the whole city. So I really, you know, I appreciate what you're saying about, you know, going through this process and having the overall general plan looked at. There's a lot of things that need to be addressed, and this is a great opportunity, and we do have the money. And I think, and I thought of that, I thought of setting, considering setting aside money now of that $4 million for this, but our mid-year budget's coming up, and then, when is that, anyway?
It's February, March time.
Yeah, right. So if, it's about the same time that we're talking about amendments to mixed use and other general plan updates, then we'll be able to say, okay, let's take some of that money and set it aside for this planning process. But just hearing an overview of the general plan isn't going to allow us to accomplish that, and it's not going to be responsive. I mean, February's four months from the strategic plan when we said we were going to do that, and everybody felt it was urgent. And so I'm talking about the mixed use, so let's just speed this up a little, you know, and substitute this workshop overview and general plan current status and content with potential amendments to mixed-use zoning. That's all. And that's not, you know, Joe, it's just, that's my motion.
Sure, sure. And just in consultation with staff-
I hope I can get a second.
Yeah, we're good with that. We can do that, if it is a substitution, and we can also do the, look at it, not in the context of the 16-17 budget, but in the context of the 15-16 mid-year budget review.
I would like to see it-
Like a set aside.
-accompany, not just, it's going to encompass the entire city. Okay? Not just the corridor and Avenue 8. You know, I don't want to talk about Nob Hill to Palos Verdes Boulevard, and, you know, we were here earlier, and the gentleman was saying how everything's focused down here in District 1 and 2, and we tend to do that, because the citizens down in District 1 and 2 are more vocal. But I think if we're going to address mixed use, it needs to be the entire city and not just certain areas.
Yeah, you should just give us options.
Because, you know, what happens is, you know, I don't want to say, well, we change the mixed-use zoning around, let's say, just in certain parts of town, and developers say, well, then we'll go infill somewhere else. Okay? So it's all for one and one for all.
There are more appropriate places.
I'll finish up first. It is kind of cool that you were here, I'm glad you stayed, because truly, the only two emails I got, and they were very demanding emails, for residents of Torrance. Now, they're welcome to speak, but if two people from Torrance are the only people that are going to yell at us about mixed use, I frankly don't know, I didn't read the entire email, because some of them were, one of them was kind of rude. But I'll take, I'll take anything Redondo residents want to say. But I'm glad you stuck around to hear it out. But anyway, I think that if we, that could be part of your motion to make sure it's citywide, not just the PCH corridor bill. Is that what we're talking about?
I was talking about mixed use.
Mixed use in the city.
Citywide, you can give us options about the whole city, or just a particular area.
Correct. And so the council understands the process. The planning commission has to conduct at least one public hearing on the amendments before they come to you for consideration. So this would mean that either December, January, planning commission meeting would have to have an item, which means we'll be starting right now on that time.
Doesn't mean the things are going to be done by June, but it moves it up by a couple of months by doing this.
And maybe the commission would present council with their recommendations and options, but you'll get something before you in February, if that's the council's direction.
That's what his motion is. Okay. Christian, you have a light.
Bill, would you be willing to accept a friendly amendment on this?
Depending on what it is.
Yeah, so actually, I'd like to keep the language as-is. I don't want to lose any forward momentum on discussing the general plan in general, but what I would say is amend, number one, to include what it is you're asking for. So some discussion or forward movement specifically on mixed use discussion.
Well, that's fine, but my understanding from staff was that we were asking a lot, and so I was just trying to make it easier on staff to give the mixed use the urgency. But if you can do both, I'm fine.
I can let you know that we've already started on the comprehensive summary of the general plan policies. We'll be doing that throughout the month of December, so we have that ready for January, February discussion. We have studied mixed use as well. The member of the commission and council adopted four or five very significant amendments to the zone. We can go back on mixed use fairly quickly. Would probably be possible to give you an update on the general plan. Would probably be possible to give you an update on the general plan and some recommendations on amendments to mixed use for February. I think we can do it.
Yeah, I just want to prioritize the mixed use. It's great that, you know, you've already done all that work, but I don't want to come back without the mixed-use amendments.
Yeah, so combining that is doable for us, and we'll make that data February 2nd.
Okay, that's fine, yeah.
And then the other friendly amendment would be to change number three to, say, in context of the mid-year.
Right. And you had also, Mr. Brand, said you would do February 16th, extended a couple of weeks instead of February 2nd? Is that-
Right, yeah, I said February 16th.
That works? Yeah. Okay.
There's a friendly amendment to this motion?
Yeah.
And it's been accepted. Laura?
I just want to make sure I understand, so in this, in this original intent, I thought we had said we were going to do the workshop in order to educate everybody about the general plan, make that all happen first, to try to make sure we were all on the same page when we start to change the general plan. That's still in there, in what you're talking about, right? We're not going to skip any steps of what you're doing in the strategic plan that was left set out before.
That's correct.
That's correct.
Okay.
Just moving it up a little bit.
So if I can just summarize for clarity, I believe the motion is to amend the first task to February 16th instead of February 2nd. And as far as what is being done by February 16th, it's not being changed, but you're just adding to consider amendments to mixed-use zones citywide. And then, the third task would be to consider the budget appropriation in the context of the mid-year review. Correct? Did I capture everyone's-
Right. That's exactly right.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. The public has spoken, it gave their motion, and a second, a friendly and all that good stuff. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, good.